Call to order, the Bill of the Boxer Planning Commission meeting on this day, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. All rise and respect.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to be following the principles of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and endless sprawl.
That secretary, roll call for attendance.
Hey, Justin Ballard is absent. Scott Flynn.
Here.
Maureen Holland.
I am here.
Michelle McCallum.
Here.
John Noel.
Here.
Leslie Pyler.
Here.
And ma'am, correct?
Yes, we do.
Next, do we have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So.
I'll go second.
And roll call, who?
Well, just all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Next, we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 7th, 2023.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes on February 7th, 2023. Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes for February 7th have been approved. Correspondents?
We just had something from the DD Director that pertains to 8C and the agenda.
And we all have a copy of that.
You all have a copy of it. We can read it now or just stay before 8C.
Suggest that we hold this in reference for review of the agenda. I may see. Call to the public, now's an opportunity for anyone in the public to make their other comments or statements. All right, as appeared to be so, we'll move on to new business. First on the agenda is a site plan review for the closets by design located at 500 South Glassby Street. Mario, I think at this point you can walk us through your assessment first and pick off the discussion.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to consider this proposed addition to the structure. The site itself is 2.7 acres in acreage size. It is occupied by a single-story building that's totaling approximately 40,135 square feet in floor area. So the rear or eastern portion of this site is an unimproved grass area, which is approximately 23,000 square feet here. So the applicant proposing to construct a 12,000-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing building and then also accompanying new asphalt and concrete vehicle maneuver area to the rear of that addition, at least of that vision. There are a site plan review letter that goes over the majority of the issues. I'm just going to summarize the most relevant and salient ones. You know, this use, existing use and its proposed expansion are permitted by right of the Iowa District, but the main issues revolve around making sure the function of the rear asphalt concrete area is appropriate for the applicant's needs and also compliance with ordinance. An example of that is when taken, the minimum off-street parking requirements for industrial users, normally they do would require 71 off-street parking spaces, biggest on the size of the structure. As proposed, the applicant is identified 80 parking spaces, but then they also have a narrative letter that has accompanied the site that currently says that they are 25 employees on the site and the large shift. Now, given that we're considering an addition, you know, the ability to accommodate 12 additional drivers and installers may result in the number of employees increasing in the future. And so that might factor into determining what is the appropriate level of off-street parking for use. The zoning ordinance does give the planning commission the ability to modify the number of off-street parking spaces required. There are some other issues that might affect the number of off-street parking spaces, such as the fact that there are, that there do appear to be some parking spaces illustrated on the site plan that may be directly in front of overhead doors or pedestrian doors that should be removed in consideration of the number of parking spaces provided. So that might reduce the number that actually could be physically provided on site. So given the compliance with the ordinance standards, may result in the site being overparked with 71 parking spaces and given the potential need to have more truck, we'll discuss some truck maneuvering issues at home. In the end, we're recommending that the applicant revise the parking layout configuration to more accurately reflect the number of employees on site now and potentially in the future. In addition to the required off-street parking, we have to look at the site circulation and loading issues. Now, the ordinance does require, and the applicant has provided, 10-foot-by-50-foot loading area shown along the rear eastern property. However, it doesn't seem feasible for a tractor-trailer vehicle to move it near this location without requiring the vehicle, tractor-trailer, to be traveling in reverse the entire length of the parking lot to exit the site. And let me also note that the site, the existing building and the proposed addition are going to have a number of overhead doors, while most of them will be utilized for the delivery vehicles. It does seem like there, some of those overhead, either existing or proposed doors, might be the loading area. So we would just recommend, so it would appear to be that it would be more functional for either the loading zone itself or would be conducted closer to the overhead doors or maybe even, perhaps even in the building, if a tractor-trailer or whatever vehicle does deliveries could actually go into the site, back up into the building and then leave, you know, forward movement and then forward movement into Glassby Street. Because that's, that's the ideal configuration. So, so the site, so we do recommend that the site plan be revised to provide a truck maneuvering plan at a minimum. We need to see the inner and outer wheelbase of a typical tractor-truck operating and a curb radii to determine that the tractor vehicle can access applicants' preferred loading and unloading area next to the site using forward driving. And then, this is just to reiterate some of these truck access issues with the larger vehicles. Number one, a separate emergency vehicle maneuvering plan should also be required unless permitted. I believe you have a copy of the fire department's review letter. They were having issues with this proposed configuration. Their suggestion was for a T-turnaround, so we'd like to know how the emergency vehicles would function in terms of accessing and exiting the site. And then also, similarly with the dumpsters. The applicant is proposing the location for two 40 cubic yard dumpsters in the northeast corner of the site. One issue is the fact that the zoning ordinance does require a decorative wall, including three sides of the dumpster storage area. So we would recommend the applicant consider revising the location of those dumpsters, considering the access requirements for large vehicles, the fact that they could have more probable space to work with by reducing the number of parking spaces, but also making sure that any dumpster enclosure is actually in compliance with the ordinance. One other informational note is the fact that screening is required between this industrial use and adjacent residential property. They are proposing a six-foot-high masonry wall. We just want to make sure that there's slightly inconsistencies on the different wall details. We'd just like to see those corrected. And then, it does appear that there's a, that the existing, there is an existing six-foot-tall chain link fence directly on the property line, and we'd just like to know what that relationship is of the screening wall with that six-foot fence. Enough areas we either approve for maintenance or this chain link fence is going away. Just like to know what that relationship is. Looking at lighting, nobody lightscaping is proposed. The site does appear late versus site visit seemed to be somewhat, to be attractive and most likely wasn't, and if we give the property a benefit of the doubt, that it was in compliance with the ordinance standards at that time. However, the planning commission does have the ability to either waive any additional landscaping requirements or take a look at the site and possibly recommend, like for example, removal of invasive species or non-native species or sort of enhancements of landscaping. Then the final issue is lighting for the site. They have submitted a photometric plan, but one of the things we just wanted to point out is that the purpose of the lighting regulation is to maintain security and safety in the village. The lighting plan indicates that there's zero light levels at the Glassby Street. This just requires vehicles to rely on their headlights because there's also no streetlights, public streetlights within the Glassby Street right over there. So we would just ask the applicant to consider increasing the light levels at the two curbs cuts. Now, obviously, the easiest and most functional way would be installation of pole lighting. However, we do feel like if the applicant wanted to minimize cost, there is potential to just upgrade the wall packs that are on the front facade of the building because the particular details for these new LED light packs, they can still maintain compliance, meaning they're fully shielded and directed downward, but the number of LEDs within the, within the fixture itself can throw light in a very significant distance. It might not reach all the way to the curb cut, but just something to consider in terms of making sure that access to their site at, at, between dusk and dawn is always in safe manner. So I know that's kind of several issues that I just wanted to point out, but in the end, we would suggest that if the planning commission during the course of the evening does choose to approve the site plan on the condition, we recommend that the other condition that issues are addressed administratively, and alternatively, the planning commission could request that a revised site plan be submitted for your review. So at the appropriate time, and we'd gladly take any questions.
All right, thanks for walking us through your assessment. Do we have representatives?
Yep.
Maybe now's a good opportunity to hear from you, if you'd like to speak.
Sure.
Please stay in the podium, say your name and address, and please pause.
Good evening, my name is Sal Traubey, all of the planning and architects. I'm the architect on the project. Also here is Jim Sharp, Sharp Engineering, Civil Engineering Project, and we are here on behalf of us, by design, for our plans. So Mario did a pretty good job of reviewing the projects, as I brought plans here, large plans, if you guys need to see them, but I happen to show them to relate to address the comments and our approach on how we see it going through. In terms of the fire department comments, the turnaround of a fire truck being proposing to, currently the dumpster is located here, the property, and we are open to relocate dumpster on this corner of the property to create a hammerhead T-turn for the fire truck to turn, to come into the property, back out, turn out. So we have, we are open to that and agreeing to that, to relocate where the dumpster enclosure and create a hammerhead for the fire trucks.
But only, if we're locals.
Sure. So the current dumpster, we're located here. We are proposing to relocate them here to allow a fire truck to do a, what they call hammerhead or a T maneuver.
And then your dumpsters, the trucks have to go straight back and do the same turn for the fire truck.
Correct.
Just.
I also have a comment on the way too, that 10 by, that 10 by 50 area that you're talking about in the rear, the truck will then back into that as well.
Right. Yep. It's true. I was commenting at DC, which is the fire department connection, moved to the north side of the building, and we'll be open to that during engineering. And then the additional course would be fire stress and with fire lines. That would of course be submitted in our engineering notes. The second review letter was from Akina. In terms of the cover sheet, we sign and seal the cover sheet, which has index of all our drawings. That's how typically we do it. If you guys want our architectural sheets signed and sealed every single one, we have to do that. In our paths of all municipalities, we just subtly assign a cover sheet, but again, we have every sheet, we have to do that. We will remove the, the third part, existing parking spaces in front of existing overhead doors, and we will remove those, as Mario suggested. The parking condo council is not something that we're concerned with.
Do these places with that name?
There was about four that I commented that we would be reducing over the orders.
With the 70s.
Correct. Along, so the tractor-trailer maneuvering, the fire truck maneuvering, and the dumpster truck maneuvering wall just shown on our revised plans, as I just illustrated. Screening of the back wall on our architectural drawings are shown as 7 feet, and that's what we're making 7 feet. We'll verify that on the civil drawings showing 6 foot. And then the last review letter from Roe, we will address the public sidewalk easements, requiring that at the next phase of the project. Of course, locating existing utilities, detailing the loading dock with engineering and providing cross-section. So that's the next phase of our project is addressing these issues. That's, so overall, that's addressing all of the comments we received to date. Our goal here is to impress approval on condition of the issues to be addressed administratively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, and I think it's part of our team, our commission review. The east property line, there is a clarification regarding the, um.
Chain link fence?
The, the chain link fence and a, was it masonry block?
Yes.
Six-foot wall. Can you elaborate more on that design and what that will look like?
Sure. So the masonry wall will be, there will be a seven-foot wall down civil drawings, 6 feet versus 7 feet. So it will be a seven-foot masonry wall, split face, kind of like a brick textured wall. The chain link fence will be removed, because that's pretty much where the chain link fence is, so the chain link fence will be gone. It will be removed, the decorative masonry wall, looking like a, a textured split face wall.
That will replace the system of chain link.
Correct. And due to the zoning ordinance complying with the screenage of the adjacent property of the residential, we're providing a decorative wall versus a C through chain link.
Mario, does your ordinance allow for some football?
Um, check. It is possible. I believe that in industrial, there could be a higher wall. Let me double check.
From my understanding, the ordinance was up to 8 feet. We'd have to go down to 6 feet. I mean, there's nothing.
I've been through a lot of worst of the ordinance.
Yes.
It's ground.
Sure. We would have to take it down to 6 feet. We have no issue with that.
Is that your chain link fence?
The property, yes, owners, yep.
Have some questions? Did you have any more? Uh, the property line, what's the distance from the property line to the wall that you're proposing to have?
The property line to the wall is about 4 feet.
And what is the, what would be the need for excavation there? Because that topography rises back there, doesn't that?
Yes.
How much are you going to need to excavate?
Uh, it's pretty minimal, so about 2 feet. So the, the decorative wall layout is a bit of a retaining wall, totally worked back from the other side of the 4 feet that I mentioned, but it's not being driven.
And how far from the trees on the adjacent property, have you done any measurements to determine how far those trees are from where you're proposing to?
Well, it's a decent distance away, but I don't have the exact dimensions to give you, but the next line of rows of trees is not a concern. If you're concerned about damaging the root system or tree system, they're a decent distance away from any issues about these trees.
And is the width of the proposed area on the back that loading, gray area, is that the, is that the required width for the use that you're going to be using?
Yes.
Can't narrow it any more?
I think we would do like the same trees. Let's just put it there.
Sure. Well, I want to finish what I'm.
Absolutely.
So in my review of the site, there are a lot more trees than were made on your survey, like about twice as many mature trees. There's, there are at least 13 large white pines that are at the back of the lot there, and at least three situs trees that are mature. So my huge concern has to do with the removal of all of that plant material and the lack of any permission for doing any replacement whatsoever.
So the current landscaping ordinance is met through the rest of landscaping on set, above and beyond the ordinance. I understand that we are removing trees in the back addition in the parking lot situation, but we are exceeding the ordinance with our immediate estimate.
Well, the current ordinance is the minimum standard. There is nothing to prevent.
Sure.
A project from actually enhancing the site, and so I still am stating to you that I'm concerned that, you know, there has been no effort to try to introduce plant material to help mitigate the negative impacts of taking out all plant material.
And with regards to the compliance with the existing standards, technically, there are some other additional standards that the site doesn't meet, for example, parking lot landscaping. Parking lots of a certain size are required to provide additional landscaping in the parking lot itself. You didn't bring that up just because, you know, the necessity of having a site comply fully with the ordinance when it's being a renovation is at the discretion of the planning commission. So as, as Commissioner just mentioned, if they wanted to see enhancement of the site, that's also a concern. So not just the minimum of the ordinance, but also the enhancement.
I think there might be opportunities too, in your existing loading dock area that's going to be infilled. Currently, the plan calls for simply relocating the store base and filling.
We just see it.
That could be enhanced with landscaping that actually provides some natural means for management.
Yeah, so the applicant, the tunneling of that truck dock was hard to drive into the facility as well. So putting landscaping there will prevent to drive into it. But I think overall, I understand your comment about enhancing landscaping. I think the applicant will be open to seeing where the site, where it's doing parking or at the front to enhance landscape. But just letting you know that the loading dock area is intended, we did fill it in to not use it as a loading dock, right?
I would be a lot more, I would be happier to see some effort at that kind of enhancement, especially because it really is to the applicant's advantage to introduce landscaping that would help, you know, with management of energy in certain areas around the building. There is room to do things. Also, it's true that there are, you know, the minimum number of tree requirements are being met, but those are small accent trees, and what's being taken out are mature, large, huge canopy trees.
Sure.
So, you know, to me, that's an important consideration. And let's see if I have any other questions. Do you currently have a large tractor-trailer that comes out of the site now?
No.
Okay, so now it's going to be a new?
No, there's no, there's no, nothing now, nothing proposed. The, they only have box trucks.
You showed out the plan because it's a requirement to show it on the plan, but they do not.
They do not have. It's all against.
So if you're.
So there's no semis, no tractor-trailers on the site today or in third type of addition.
Okay. So if you're going to be looking at revising your parking lot in some way, shape or form, let me just emphasize to look for opportunities to introduce plant material, to break up all of that asphalt and to enhance the site. And I see opportunities to put large canopy shaped trees in the front. I think, you know, I know you have a little seating area for employees in front there. That's very nice, but, you know, I'm just saying, yes, the standards are met, but you can do better. I think that's my last question.
Mario? I think I follow a little bit less than more of a meeting. I just, you answered my question, what plan's been yours. This has always been one, this at the property to the north. It's always been my favorite industrial piece of the property. It's a beautiful location. Don't ruin it. I just, don't ruin it.
Good job.
I wrote some things down, so I'd like to run through them.
Sure.
Off-street parking requirements, your revised parking layout, you talked about spaces, but you didn't talk about revising that. Is that part of?
Yes.
Supposedly.
Yep.
Circulation would be emphasized, be very concerned. I want to get into two meetings. This is the second one. When I get up, I even got a call, a sticky on from the fire department about circulation. The fire department is very clear, said the fire department recommends the planning commission only approve this project once the corrections have been made. I'm very firm on that.
Sure.
For that turnaround in the back.
So we, let's go to the fire marshal, agenda, and we were discussing with them, and we are okay with meeting the hammerhead T-turnaround.
I did talk with him this morning, and I'd like to have him approve it, not, not just saying you can put it in.
Sure.
I want to make sure we get numbers on the, on the drawing.
And that's, when we say administer to approve, that's what would be, would be approved upon his.
Correct. The dumpster enclosure, you change the location, you have compliance with the ordinance in regards to screening. You don't want to put the front doors on because of the, apparently you move those large dumpsters on a regular basis, or it was normal.
Right.
Uh, landscaping, we touched on that. We talked about lighting on Glassby Street, safety and the security in the village. There was also a little note in there that if you were to change the signings, we pretty well go with different timers.
Yep.
And then there's a low engineering letter, the public sidewalk, legal discretion needs to be, because it's my private land. And then there was more information in the back, and this is the big one right now because we're changing things, the grades and layouts. So Mr. Kier, I'd prefer to make a motion if you'd like.
Please make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion tonight that we postpone this until we have the revised plans drawn up and submitted back to us for the seven reasons I just went through. If you want me to remind you what those reasons are, but I can give you copies. What we'd like to see in the drawings, particularly the turnaround, the T configuration for the fire department and that dumpster in that back, that's a long way from the road to that dumpster. I know you have a limited site, but it's very difficult back there, the athletic constraints with landscaping. Now that you're moving back in there, things are going to move around back in the back of it.
Can you include in this, these concerns about landscaping?
I, I can include it as a line item if you'd like, but I did talk about landscape enhancements, removing the plant material, replacing and/or introducing new materials. That's what she was, really, she was talking about.
So you'll get that.
So those are the things that we talked about, we'd like to see on those new drawings. So I don't think I need to tease it, Mr. White.
That's fine.
Okay.
Madam Secretary?
I guess if I had to add an asterisk to that, it would be to look at opportunities to use plant material for managing stormwater besides, you know, strictly the existing storm right now. Okay, sorry.
Did want to leave that.
Madam Secretary, do we have that motion well documented to prepare for a?
Yes, basically, of course, postpone. Postpone it until we have, they address all of the requirements or recommendations of the actual plan and return around landscape lighting.
John's notes, we'll make sure all those are covered.
Is there a second or supportive motion, asterisk?
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Nick?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Lynn Quinn?
Yes.
Moving on, we have a signed design review at 15 East Verdic Street for Mortgage 1. Mario, we look to you for your synopsis.
Okay. So the applicant is opposing, requesting a sign permit. Who's.
So, the applicant is proposing, requesting a sign permit to install one internally illuminated wall sign for Mortgage One at 15 East Verdic. And the sign is proposed to be located on the building's east side for the sign elevation facing the public apartment. The maximum wall signage area based on the ordinance per unit is 30 square feet, and the building's east elevation currently has 18 square foot box walls for this particular unit. So, the submitted application of sign diagram, we just wanted to note, actually, I have slight inconsistencies in the area of the dimension information. So, based on the ordinance, we do suggest that the sign dimensions and area have to be revised to offer a maximum of 12 square feet for this proposed sign. It's believed that this signage is for the one unit, and so therefore, the maximum they can have is 12 square feet. We recommend that that sign be 30 inches high by 16 inches wide so that it matches the height of the existing sign. Moving on to the, the sign itself is going to be a, the proposed sign is a box or cabinet style sign with a white colored face. A contrasting opaque gray logo along with navy text will be applied to this acrylic face. And, you know, the building renovation and based on that existing renovation, the materials on the building, the colors, and this existing box sign, they're all very contemporary in character. So, and the proposed box sign would be consistent with this building's aesthetic. It's not necessarily more, it's not necessarily one of our more historic structures, but based on the style of the sign, it does seem like it can handle that. One thing we wanted to note is that this proposed white plastic face, with the contrasting opaque letters applied to it, is going to create the effect of a square, fully illuminated box. You know, the high percentage of white background area will allow for a high level of light transmission glare from this box. We recommend actually that the face color is be inverted to have a navy background of white letters. This would reduce the light transmission area while still creating an effective signage for non-daylight hours, for two, for non-daylight hours. So, inverted colors, you know, or reverse logos, sometimes called, are quite common and are utilized effectively for commercial uses. We think it would be attractive and also minimizing the level of intensity. But to ensure that the illumination is not excessive, even with this proposed revision, we do recommend a dimmer being installed. So, in the end, we recommend the planning commission grant approval for the proposed sign based on a style which is in keeping with the current aesthetics of this particular building. But we recommend any approval should be contingent upon the sign measuring 30 inches by 60 inches, the acrylic face utilizing a navy background of white letters, and the installation of a dimmer control module, and then the fact that the luminance level not exceed 100 candela per square meter from dusk to dawn.
Does the applicant hear? I don't think that is enough. I called Terry and texted Terry yesterday. The site has had a lot of variances for signs over the years, but they've all been resented. So, are they back to just reading what the order of course, what you think?
That's the way the last approval document came in 2020 for the wall signage. It said that they revealed all prior signs for the property. Anything that had been approved at that point is now still in order, ready. And I think I provided you those minutes.
You did. It was the dates, I don't
July
Covid was like year to go. I'm like, hey, no Covid days.
We were actually asking for that meeting, so
I agree. Have we talked to the applicant about the colors and signs? No, they were
I didn't have any indication.
They were provided the review, so I remember, well, they were also noticed at the meeting.
And John Dorby.
Let's see, Eric's outside.
Terry, excuse me, Mr. Terry, do you The applicant's not here to agree or disagree. If we take the recommendations of Mario and approve those, is that sufficient for this board to say to the applicant that's not here, this is what we'd like to see?
Absolutely.
And if they then choose not to follow the approval in those contingencies for the redesign of the colors, they would have to return for site plan review.
Thank you.
Do you have other comments? We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign view of 15 East Verdic Mortgage One to have the sign be 30 by 60 inches, invert the color navy where they were going to have white, and a dimmer being spelled to control dust to dawn meter.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary.
Noel?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
I'm there?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have a car restoration storage building at 43 North Washington with the applicant and owner Chuck Snyder. Based on some of the discussion within the commission review of what has been presented, it appears that this is a little or less a forum here. I believe Chuck is here, so Chuck, if you could, please stand to the podium and explain to the commission.
Mr. Jerry, I just wanted to briefly give a clarification on my review. I inadvertently used restoration for the proposed use. This is actually a car collection business. The vehicles are, do have some detailed restore off-site, but there's no, through act communication with the applicant, there is no level of vehicle maintenance or activity on the site. The existing building is an office, and then the proposed building is for the car collection storage. So, it's accessory to the principal use of an office, and there will be no car repair details or anything like that going on. We have some other details through that course of communication to clarify, Chuck. We can indicate for the applicant, but I just wanted to point that out specifically.
Can I suggest that Mario does his introduction prior to?
We're in agreement with that. Mario, if you could continue and elaborate on your assessment.
Yeah, so, once again, an apologies for any kind of confusion of the title of what I've done, but further, like, as mentioned, purely communication with the property owner and applicant has specified the activity proposed on the site. Number one, the fact that the applicant has done actually already a lot split for this particular piece of property. The applicant has owned the three properties that are directly adjacent to Washington Street, and they have received already approval from open county for the creation of this proposed piece of property. So, it will be a separate tax ID number and a separate piece of property as illustrated on the site plan. And so, this site is a newly created lot, approximately 9,350 square feet area, located to the rear of 47 North Washington, 57 North Washington. And it's currently occupied by a single-story building that's approximately 680 square feet in the northeast corner of the property, and this building is occupied by an office space. The remainder of the lot is a combination of an existing parking lot and an unapproved grass area. And the applicant is proposing to construct a 4,466 square foot building to the north of this existing structure for three bays for car storage of the collection. When it comes to use, as mentioned, within my letter, I go over the different probabilities of what this use could be. As mentioned, communication is clarified, this will solely be a car collection business that is for storage of the vehicle related to the business until, you know, the storage of the vehicles when they're purchased, and then until the time at which they're delivered to purchasers in the future. So, that, so, in regards to let it be, that's been clarified. With regards to the dimensional requirements, we do ask that a revised site plan and building elevations are provided that have the same proposed building dimensions. There are some slight inconsistencies between the site plan and the elevation, so we want to make sure that the proposed buildings are the same size. When it comes to the building elevations themselves, you know, this building is located in our form-based code overlay, and the building is functioning as a storage and sex restructure, and it's intended to be constructed to complement principal structures within the immediate And one thing with regards to the style that's proposed, you know, it's mass, it's intended to be, excuse me, trying to get some You know, the proposed building is, you know, pretty utilitarian in nature, so the proposed design is, you know, understandable through the use of, through the use of metal siding on the sides and on all the walls, and the use of overhead doors, and then the use of standing steam metal roof for the structure itself. But we would recommend the use of some high-quality materials such as possibly applying some foundation or even a traditional modular brick, you know, utilizing a running bond for either the wall facade or probably possibly for the foundation level of the building. Though that type of material would enhance the overall look and aesthetic of the site, still be able for the building itself to function for the proposed use of the structure itself. So, looking at some other materials, we do think would be appropriate for this particular With regards to parking, there are two parking spaces as required for the primary office use itself. As noted, the applicant does own the adjacent property, but just like clarification as whether the office worker or would the parking within the actual storage building or possibly have a parking sharing agreement with the adjacent property. That would need to be clarified in terms of how those off-street parking requirements are met. With regards to circulation and loading, additional information is indicated that the vehicles actually stored on site, where the vast majority will be drivable, so they'll be operational, and they will be driven to the site. There may be an instance in which the vehicles themselves would be delivered, but that would be on a flatbed tow truck, so a single-vehicle flatbed tow truck, which has the turning radius and wheelbase of a standard vehicle, so would access the site efficiently. And the applicant has indicated there's no need for any type of, other type of tractor-trailer or nothing visiting the site. So, a standard, as vehicles being driven themselves to the site, they're adequately accessed. So, note that there is no landscape plan has been provided, so we would recommend that the applicant provide a landscape plan that identifies the type, the locations, species, and plannings of all existing proposed plant materials in compliance with the ordinance and at the direction of the planning commission. The applicant has not submitted a photometric plan, so if any site lighting is proposed, we recommend that that photometric plan he's provided to identify its light intensity and shared compliance with the ordinance. And then looking at, the site does not show a location or trash dumpster, so the site plan, we recommend be revised to provide a location, either a new dumpster void in compliance with the plan, or there is the possibility of sharing any kind of existing dumpster or trash removal service with existing properties, given that they're owned by the property owner himself. But we would recommend any kind of dumpster sharing agreement being allowed, being recorded for this particular use versus the other uses on the site. So, with regards to additional information being provided, that's been helpful with regards to the skeer, so its accountability with the district, but we do feel that there's additional information that's been provided with regards to the building elevation, the type of material proposed, any proposal for landscaping, lighting issues, and some clarification on the parking as well. So, those are information we do believe does need to be addressed.
Mario, I'm a little lost in this. What is the, is the applicant seeking something, and what are they seeking?
The applicant is seeking to construct a structure to allow for storage of vehicles related to the car collection business. So, the new structure will be constructed so they can store vehicles on the site related to the business.
Normally, we have much more information than this.
That's correct. That's why in the initial review letter, we didn't request that information. Some additional information has been provided, but there is still a need to address other issues such as, like I said, light, off-street parking, the lighting, landscaping, dumpster
This hasn't a site plan.
Correct.
Isn't it, Chuck?
It's the commission
I'd like to
I think the applicant wants to speak.
I live at 155 East Glass Road in Cortinville, Michigan. It's nice to see you, Reed. We've had a very interesting unusual relationship
Started yesterday.
About 20 years. So, I came to your community in 1999. I restored 19 buildings in their town. I've done 16 beautification awards. So, this is my first rodeo. I am an avid collector, and this site is sort of an ugly little duckling. Have any of you done to the site? So, you saw the ship and all that's there, it's, I don't know, it never got approved. It's 14 feet in the air, it's fallen apart. So, our vision is to take this little piece of property and turn it into something that's attractive. I've never torn down a building this down. Some of them, this is newer, for example, or the post was a catastrophe, but we resurrected it from the dead. And that's one of three houses of that architecture in the community. I redid the funeral home and lots of other buildings. So, what I want to do is just cover a few points with you, and one of the points I'd want to demonstrate to you is we're not a Mickey Mouse operation. I'm a really avid collector. First thing I'm giving you is a picture of Stonegate Farm, which I bought and spent two years of the story. And this is a copy in this book of my collection that was at Stonegate Farm. It was called The Big Red Barn. It appeared in this book.
That's the same as this, right?
Not yet.
You want me to just pass this?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm not, because I'm not giving those to you to dwell on, I'm just giving you an idea of what it is I do. And then the final book there, which has the tractors on it, that was the second collection. I sold the collection in 2016, or part of that collection. I don't sell cars to people. I sell cars basically after I'm done collecting, and we have lots of them, and they go and just I don't sell cars to people. I sell cars basically after I'm done collecting and we have auctions and they go and they sell. So for example, at tractor auction, I had the world's largest collection of Orchard Junior and road tractors. At my farm, we had an auction. We had twelve hundred people at that auction. It was an interesting challenge parking twelve hundred cars and twelve hundred trucks and feeding people and so forth. But in five hours, we sold a hundred tractors and four hundred other items. So now we're building the third collection. It's going to be at a different location. I want to give you this. This is where all deliveries come. Regardless of what it is, all deliveries are done at Stonegate Farm. It was specifically designed to accommodate semis. We bought a hundred and seventy-five tractors, came in, a hundred and seventy-five tractors went to restoration, a hundred and seventy-five tractors came back, and a hundred and seventy-five tractors were sold. That's a lot in and out. So you have to have a system that's well-suited for semis. Stonegate Farm is about fifteen minutes from exit 149 at I-69. That's why I have, semi can get off the freeway, they're there in fifteen minutes to get on the property. Our driveways are designed to let it go north or south, so nothing will come into this town. Those vehicles that will go in this building will not be trucked in, will drive in. And how we maintain our collection, we don't do any restoration. I buy nothing. Nothing is bought that isn't perfect. You pay more, but it's perfect. And it's only perfect once. So what we do is we don't do paint. We don't build upholstery. We don't do anything. We don't, we don't even change the oil. You buy the vehicle, it's trucked in and it's positioned to work. I don't put a debt between the times. So how we maintain these vehicles, because it is, it was quite a challenge, two hundred and seventy-five tractors. Everything has a battery tender. Once a month, everything is started. So for example, I'll say this building we're talking about, I'm going to go to this building during the daytime. I'm going to open the doors. I'm going to inspect the floors, see if there's any leakages, any seals or whatever. Going to make sure the battery tenders are all functioning properly. Going to start the vehicles up. Let them run for five to ten minutes, turn them off, close the doors, and see them next month.
And these are all owned by you?
Everything is owned.
Right, that explains to...
Everything is owned by you.
Dale or Barbie or...
I mean, not that I'm too inclined or, but I have thirty-five cars. I have five trucks. I have six speedboats. I have a significant number of vintage campers. I have bicycles. I have scooters. I have everything that I ever wanted to have, I have. So that's, that's how, how we do it. I'm eighty-two. That's my birthday. So anyway, we're going to continue doing what we do. So these are the things I wanted to just highlight with you. We talked about lighting and the lighting plan. We already have a lighting plan. We have DT commercial overhead lighting for gone-to-dust, two-hundred-and-fifty-watt, high-pressure sodium lamps that are mounted on Edison poles, thirty feet in the air, and maintained by Edison. Our alarm system, the buildings have alarm systems. They don't just have a alarm system. It's a monitored alarm system. Need it called to the police. I've already mentioned it all. Deliveries go to Stonegate Farm. So just two other things. There is no signage. I have a couple of signs. You know, what I have...
Come and steal my garden.
Yeah, come. No, we don't do that. So actually, if you ever saw a program called American Pickers, you ever see that program on TV? So they wanted to come to my farm and mess up. And I had, I don't want that motor right here. I don't want people knowing what I have. And then finally, we talked about dumpsters. There's an existing dumpster on the site. It's been there for ten years. It services the building in that, that area. So we have sixty-five, fifty-seven, forty-seven. And this building all uses the same dumpster, which is empty twice a week. And finally, FYI, there is an active fiberglass at the corner of Davison and Washington. That's roughly a hundred and fifty feet from this building. So we're, we're just taking care of, we're caring about signage. We're pretty good about making our buildings look good. We don't take any deliveries here. Once a month, you'll see me there. We have an alarm system. We have great lighting. What else can I tell you? Well, I know what else I can tell you. I'm going to turn it over to Jim Sharp and he's going to go through all the little nift-naws that your engineer and your planner have commented on. It's unfortunate that we get these complies on Thursday. Doesn't give us much time to wiggle. Thursday, Friday, no one's here and we're here Tuesday. So, you know, fortunately for us, none of them are major. Jim's a professional. He's a partnership engineer. So I think we've addressed every item that's on there in a satisfactory manner. If there is something that's not to your liking, I would appreciate it if you would make that something subject to administrative review and approval after. Because this is a little bit of a start for me to come here. Thanks.
Chuck, you said your address was 155 East Glass Road?
Yes.
Your application says 2681 Alley Road. Are they both okay?
Well, actually, I had two addresses, but now I've, you know, in the state of Michigan, you're allowed to have two principal residences for three years.
Where can I arrest you?
You can arrest me at 155 East Glass Road.
That's the one I want to leave you with.
Which I'm gonna, not that you'll leave a ten, but I'm gonna have an open house order and everyone will...
Oh, Chuck, are you on heat?
That is going to be spectacular. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Jim.
So again, Jim Sharp, truck engineer, civil engineers for the project here. And as Chuck had mentioned, you know, we received some of these letters a little late in the game. We did try to make some changes to the plan and that's what you have in front of you. I understand that oftentimes those aren't acceptable because that's not what's submitted. What we're trying to do is show you that we can make the required modifications per, you know, the comment letters from your consultants. And hopefully, we can walk away with at least an administrative approval tonight and then clean everything up as we, you know, once we can get a formal submittal back, back to Mario and his, you know, to the consultants there. So I don't know if you want to go through them line by line. But you know, one of the items that we discussed was the parcel split. And if you go to the property gateway website, and again, I have a map, you can see that the property split has already occurred and we have updated plans with the new parcel owners.
Mr. Sharp, can I just interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, that, when it first went to Row, Row wasn't aware that the split was in process. And the split was finalized the sixth or eighth of this month through property gateway. So when Row, when it went to Row, it was still in process and he didn't, it wasn't approved. When it had been approved, that's why it now shows in the property gateway. That was only two weeks ago.
She went with the county for the split after the building?
No, through us. I, I processed it myself back in December. There was a lot of issues with it. That's in property land. It, yeah. A lot of, Houston Kennedy then had to do a lot of changes, amendments to county equalization. And they finally got it and it got approved. I got notification on the sixth or eighth of this month. But that's kind of why Row's letter started off that way. He wasn't aware that Chuck owned all those properties. A, that was my fault. And B, the parcel split was still pending at that point.
Okay, right. So again, in going through the roll out, I think there's just a lot of miscommunication there. One of the items talks about, you know, that the land doesn't have direct access to the right of light. But there is an even better place, an access easier to get to forty-three and back. So this is an expansion of that with forty-three being principal use and then this being building being accessory to forty-three. With respect to the water and sewer connections, you know, again, I just don't think that it was clear. We'll get to that once we submit the engineering. But the water service and the sanitary sewer service are going to come from Davison Street. They will actually be installed through the, through the garage that currently exists there, which is an open garage. It's not a closed garage. You can drive through it now. So we will install those utilities through that garage from Davison Street and bring them to this new, to this new building.
Does it need fire suppression?
I, is there need to be fire suppression, per fire suppression, for what? Will that be required in this building?
Does that require, just, I don't know, that code?
Well, we don't have that information in the review, so.
Right. The first, the first chief comments didn't come out of fire suppression.
It was also renovation rather than a storage, so I'm just asking, Chuck. You know me. To your cars, you must surprise the crowds.
Well, and Jim, if I may, the commission here has listened to Mario's assessment, Mr. Schneider's discussion and plans on the site. We've heard a little bit from you on your plans and actions that are being taken to address some of the concerns from Mario's review. But from where we're seeing now, we don't have the site plan here, case in point, as the example to review. We can talk and talk.
Sure.
And, and, you know, until the cows come home. But at the end of the day, this commission needs the complete site plan to be presented to us for thorough review, something documented for us to ultimately make a decision on. So with that being said...
Understood your motion, just postpone this.
And if I may elaborate, the motion would be to postpone the review of the...
Excuse me. I'm an avid property owner. Part of the project goes under my property. I have legal interest in this project. I'd like to speak. Will I be allowed to add to your motion? Fifty-nine North Washington.
Sir, you will have the opportunity to make comment.
No. No, no. I have legal interest in this property, but the driveway for fifty-seven North Washington crosses my property.
Mr. Sharp, if you would step away and if you could introduce your...
Okay, I promise.
...your interest.
Excuse me, we have a phone award. We have a motion on the floor. Terry, how would you suggest we handle this?
I have a motion. I will continue and take the second vote for both of them and do your promise.
Chuck, I can suggest, take the motion, begin support, then we need Mr. Blake to make his comments. And then we take our vote.
I, I think any motion should include the particulars of what we're looking for in the site plan when it comes back.
We already have a motion. I could read, we can vote on this motion and cancel it. We can do a new one.
That would be helpful to everyone. Yeah, that's fine.
We then lead, we then lead the second.
Mr. Schles.
Terry, is there a vote call motion or is the motion on the table?
Well, let me just, is this a motion to postpone or is this a motion to cancel?
It was a, my understanding is there is a motion to postpone. We, as a commission, identified that there was a motion on the floor that required a second and then vote. We received the second. We can then go through the vote and if the motion is rejected, another motion. Can that be presented and elaborated on that is sufficient to the commission?
Yes, and also if it is, if the motion was approved and any more information was presented, we would also have the ability to make another motion based on, you know, extra information that you didn't have by anybody who voted in favor of supporting the motion that passed. So you can go either way with this. I think it's probably easiest to do it in Mo's way. Just let it sit, let him speak and then see if there's anything...
Take the vote.
So the motion as it stands, the recommendation was for it to sit here, interest prior to the voting?
Hold the motion and postpone it. Now we're going to take Mr. Blake's comments, then we'll vote the motion.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm okay with that. So we will hold the motion, sir?
Okay. Thank you for your professionalism. It's nice to see that. Dale Willick, fifty-nine North Washington. I purchased the property in nineteen ninety-seven. Before that, I moved into the village in about nineteen ninety. So I bought this property over twenty-five years ago. This is the greenhouse trimmed in a white where M.D. recently had to take out the sidewalk. As I said, I wanted to jump up and so you know, I have a bit of a legal interest in this project. If you look on the site plan, the driveway for fifty-nine, or fifty-seven North Washington laps over my property. And there is a twenty-fifteen judgment regarding prescriptive easement. Marine recall this. This was a long-going debate of ten years ago. Mr. Schneider is correct. These five parcels up on this corner have been the eyesore for twenty years. Mr. Schneider is not the first to propose a development. I can tell you there have been developers, businessmen, and dreamers trying to do things to various properties for thirty years.
Don't we get to wear flyers?
I, I appreciate it. I, you know, I do this for a living. Flyers, my... Let me ask the planner a few quick questions because this is based on what happened before. The form-based district...
Mr. Chair, would you like to...
Miss, please, please, I have to ask this question.
So at this point, we're, we're hearing your comments?
It's my, I'll be, you're correct. My understanding is the form, okay, this is in the form-based district of the project. And it's my understanding that form-based district is essentially a aesthetic overlay district for the main street theme of the village. If you look, next item is if you look in the non-conformity section, it says, "Any adjacent parcels owned by the same owner shall be considered one parcel for the purposes of zoning." And I believe there are four parcels that are adjacent to each other, Mr. Schneider. That makes four parcels for one development. And I'm, the tax, a separate tax ID is not separated out. When you look at this project, you need to look at all four parcels. And that would be forty-three, forty-seven, fifty-seven, skip my house, fifty-nine, and then sixty-five. The village recently adopted a wastewater management plan or a stormwater management plan. And I saw in the engineering review, you noted there's two catch bases. They are not catch bases. They're leaching bases. When they were installed, one in the parking lot, asphalt parking lot, probably in the nineties for hunting. And then the one in the gravel parking lot at fifty-seven North Washington, which is a fraud. They didn't put in the lateral leaching lines. So they don't connect to storm drains. And when it rains, we get a little bit of water. We get a good rain, fifty-seven North Washington ponds. And if we get a downpour, it plugs over into the adjacent parcels. Let me find the pictures.
Jim, if I may?
What? I'm sorry.
There is a, a time limit of three minutes.
Not when, not when you're a property owner.
Technically, it's a safe lane review. It's not supposed to be in public.
Yes. All right, I can sum it up. I support his project for multi-development. I support his project for multi-development. But this project needs significant professional development so it doesn't end up looking like the White House development with driveways everywhere. And we need a deadline with consequences. So it doesn't wind up, winding up being like the White Bull project that drives on for seven or eight years. I'm going to go back to twenty fifteen and note that fifty-seven North Washington has never completed their site plan requirements to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, understood. Uh, point made and, uh.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is the motion on the table?
And did you say we can vote either way on this and then also do a second motion?
Yes. But I'll be clear, I did not call this a site plan. We are not here for a site plan tonight.
Postpone.
Just postpone this activity.
I will second.
Okay, well, we had a motion, I know, and a second by the poll to postpone. So now we can go to a roll call. And then we decide where to go from there, so. Uh, Kyler, yes, solid.
Can I hear the motion? Just to postpone.
Motion postponed.
That's all it says?
It.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, McCallum?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, with the, with the gentleman's comments, there's a lot information about this piece of property. So I would suggest that our professionals roll their shirts sleeves up and look into it before it comes back to, to us so we can make some good decisions.
Excellent, I agree. And if anybody wants to call me later, we can discuss them.
That would be inappropriate.
Inappropriate or appropriate?
Inappropriate.
Oh, you think?
I do.
Oh, you?
Let's continue moving through the agenda. Now we have a, an approved motion for ILC. We have now the two thousand and twenty-two annual review letter that was presented to the commission from, Mario, I think in, in years past, um, the, the discussions similar to involve their reviews. Now walk us through your, your annual review. We can have some open dialogue and then make a disposition if I proceed.
Yes, that sounds good. Um, so as, as we've known, uh, one of the activities required by the Planning and Zingling Act is for the planning commission to prepare a report that's given to the village council so they can just have a summary of our activities. And so before you is a draft of that report. And then basically you just list the meetings that we did, that were held by the planning commission that occurred, required, uh, members of the commission within two thousand and twenty-two. And then, um, going over our site plan and then we all, I knew, I mean, I knew we had a lot, but I didn't really, I mean, just going back and looking at this guy sometimes, I didn't know we approved that any adult-use marijuana retailers. And that was before the fact that we approved Loom back in two thousand and twenty-one. But this is just a summary of those that have been approved. Uh, as, as noted, it's a majority adult-use marijuana retailers are considered. We did have, um, uh, initial approved review and discussion of an approval of preliminary site plan for Noda's parking lot expansion. And then we had the initial approval of, uh, the Clean Bright Car Wash. Of course, as this, this is supposed to summarize our two thousand and twenty-two activities. I just know that eventually they did come back and they did get revised plan in two thousand and twenty-three without a speed zone. And then we did have some, several sign design reviews. That was a bulk of our discussion. And last year, because of that activity, we really didn't delve too much into any type of zoning ordinance amendments. We just considered, had a brief discussion of our open meetings in regards to sign design. So that's just a summary. Basically, that's always the annual reports was to summarize it. And then our action plan, the text in front of you in this draft is exactly as the previous plan. So I just wanted to present it to you in its current form and its previous form so you could have a chance to see what we thought we would be able to be doing. Based on our level of activity, what we ended up addressing was, well, not much of these any issues. So before you is the idea that in regards to annual plan, plan for the CUP activities. You know, whether you want to leave these as is, so we can still consider them when we have time. If there's any kind of edits, you want to make to existing projects or texts, or if you want to consider eliminating some of these or even adding new ones. So that's really the crux of any kind of recommendations or changes for this.
Is this on a timeframe to get to the policy?
Uh, not really, only in, in the fact that, you know, if there's anything in the action plan that you wanted to do this year, then we just have to.
The reason I asked that, tonight's not a good night as far as I'm concerned, but we just got this. I haven't had a chance to review it.
Exactly.
You've asked us for changes and edits. Uh, I think if we could wait according to time table, another we're to postpone until next meeting. If we could evaluate this and make, and make recommendations for changes, edits, and the things that you just asked.
Absolutely, yes, because you're right, there's a lot of text to go over. The whole idea was just, you know, if you guys had any thoughts about it. But no, there's no timeframe, so it's just a matter of when you feel comfortable with it and want to discuss it in more detail, we can do that later.
I can make a motion for.
Well, actually, I get the count out. On page four, the newly revised ordinance issues, food trucks. The village council is working, the township just adopted a food truck.
Right.
The village council is working on adopting it. Basically, the township's ordinance was some changes outside the zoning ordinance. Those will be taken out of the townships. And in order to get our ordinance to mention town sets for the fire to be added.
The, the order will not be added.
Absolutely, correct.
Okay, no, that's the.
I have a couple of things that I just want to mention. Um, in order for the commissioners to think about things as they're digesting this list in fact, the recommendation. One is that what doesn't appear in here, but I feel like in this last year has become very important is a review of the landscape ordinance. And, uh, and I think it needs revision. I don't think it's that equipped as it is and it doesn't reflect current best practices as well as it should and would. I think if we were able to put that in this list, that would be an important consideration. Especially if we're going to be removing number two because we don't need to address that. I also think that when we do come back to discuss this, I would like to consider two things. One is that we, we establish some kind of priority list here instead of just giving an enumerated list that we all can agree on. And secondly, because there is a serious amount of work to do, I would like to propose that there's an agenda item at each meeting that includes some discussion, some aspect of our action plan. And if there's no time to address it because the agenda is full, I think the clerk should have the latitude to defer it. But I would hate to see four or five months go by just to even discuss.
It's not further.
You know, I mean, this is really, we're going to need a piece to include it on every agenda if possible.
If you were to take this plan.
You want to fight from the act?
We have to do that. And include a statement that we would have a point of decision. We would have the opportunity to have this, this action.
I would just threaten by the act. So does Bob want to fight him on this?
Public act.
Please take your, take your, take it outside, please. We have a meeting item, we have a really hard time here in here. We really appreciate that so we can ramp things up and continue with this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Back to the, the point on our annual review and action plan alignment to ensure that we're thriving towards, um, results and ensuring that this remains open and open element in our regular discussion. If we have that as an open agenda item to talk about on, on each, in each meeting, we're not necessarily going to be ruling on anything or making a motion. So it would be more or less.
A discussion.
A, a discussion.
Like an uptake, like what, you know, where are we at this month, kind of a net that we're taking any action.
Unless we make, we could, we can make a request to get some more information.
But I just think it will put it in front of us a little more often and that's to all of our benefit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, um, would be in November when, um, voted for the transportation. I mean, I know that would be more like a master plan type thing, but I mean, is that something that would be considered within an action plan or be like, I mean, I just don't know what that is. You know, I don't know what that's going to look like, maybe suppose that's like a bigger picture type thing.
Uh, um, I'm sorry, can you remember?
Um, we've been, we've voted to have like the public transportation, you know, it's like the transportation tax. But I just didn't know how in November with the election, like I didn't know that's going to increase. A general election, a general election, sorry, sorry, a general election. Yeah, so we, we voted for a tax for the transportation. So I don't know if that's like something that, you know, ends up, you know, making an effect of us. Is that some, just something we would not look at at some point?
So, so that's, that I know they would probably be considered when you review or do a new master plan.
Yeah.
Because, so what I would, would be within the comprehensive master plan where that revised level of service and, and aspects of the, of the, the new service would be considered as part of your existing char, existing transportation system and how you want to see proposed in the future. So that's either part of a comprehensive master plan or unless you want to do some type of separate transportation plan. Given the size of the village, I would probably think it'd be part of your master plan.
Any other comments on how we want to address the review? No? Okay, then do we?
Did you make a motion on it then?
No, I didn't make a motion. I don't, do we need a motion on this, Terry?
No.
I didn't think we did. I was just making a, I was just.
It's just a few minutes, I can't.
Is there any, we want a request from Mario in anticipation of elaborating and refining the annual review prior to submitting to council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying we're going to discuss this the next meeting? Or you're saying that?
I suppose, I suppose I was implying that there would be further discussion.
I would think there would be, I would, if I can, too, I would think it would.
Yeah, and forgive me for the way I summarized it at the end. This is definitely just an idea for initial comments of it. Obviously, then the idea would be for you to have time to digest the data, think about it, and then come back with your proposed revisions and so we can discuss them at a future time that you propose. But, and through the course of that, if during the course of, between now and our next meeting, if you'd like to just contact me to request information, you do that individually.
Then I, I think we're at a point where that agenda item we're in alignment. It needs to be reviewed and analyzed further on honor and brought back to the, the table for further discussion. Okay. And no vote or any medical report there. So we'll move on. We have another agenda item, old business for the sacred time. Um, you know, this was reviewed and discussed in our, our last agenda of our last meeting with the recommendation to remove the words or hold another municipal office on page one, Article Three, Section One. Um, the, as stated, the amendment was introduced on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at our planning commission meeting. Are there any open points or questions? If not, is there a motion on the, the table?
Some of, or to approve the amendment to the planning commission bylaws as specified to remove the word or hold another municipal office on page twelve, Article Three, Section One, amendment introduced on February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? A roll call vote, Terry?
Terry, just put a question part of the reason. It's just us.
Just you, two eyeballs.
Just checking.
You want to roll call?
Yes. Yes.
Call, yes. Bylaw, yes. Call, yes. No?
Yes.
There is John.
Do we have any?
Open.
Okay, next we have.
I'd like to change my. Oh, I can go.
Next, we have a public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? That's sign decided, no? Do we have any consultant and administration comments?
Nothing else on this.
The first meeting.
And.
Yes, actually, I would like, like, uh, organization.
You did a great thing. Do we have any of these from the Oxford comment?
Not at this time.
And from the ZBA? DDA? I don't think we have. Okay. Any final comments from the commission?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to get to a final comment.
Yes, we, we had a difficult evening. We have a lot of what if's, ands, and could be's, and babies. And I apologize that to, for myself as well, maybe possibly for the planning commission. We weren't as smooth getting through this as what, what we could have been. But I think we did make some accomplishments and when things come back to us, it'll be in better order for us to make good decisions.
Actually, you have a quick comment for the public who's present. Just a reminder that if you come to a planning commission meeting and you'd like to make public comment, there is a provision for that on the agenda and to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Motion for adjournment.
It's a move.